Can we call meeting to order? Row call.
Row call. This action is taken by calling each board member's name with the board member answering present. Mr. Murray.
Present.
Ms. Wilson.
Present.
Ms. Higgins-Bobham.
Present.
Mr. Kazoo.
Present.
And Ms. Whipper.
Thank you. Present.
All board members present.
Okay, adoption of the agenda.
Ms. Whipper, I don't have anything to add or take away from the agenda, so if there's no other corrections or amendments, I recommend the agenda be approved as presented.
I'll make options to the birthday agenda.
I'll stick to it.
Mr. Murray.
Yes.
Ms. Wilson.
Yes.
Ms. Higgins-Bobham.
Yes.
Mr. Kazoo.
Yes.
And Ms. Whipper.
Yes.
Public comments? Anyone? Will we get started? Consent agenda items?
We have the previous meeting minutes, payment of bills, school activity fund reports, field trips, and treasurer's monthly report. At this time, Ms. Carnes can present that.
The treasurer's report for the month of November 2022. Balance on hand for beginning of the month, $6,434,453.66. Total receipts for the month, $5,984,865.87. Total receipts and beginning balance together, $12,419,319.53. Disbursements for the month were $2,809,542.65, and that brings the balance at the close of the month to $9,609,776.88. In fund balances for the general fund, Fund I, $5,853,477.58; in special projects, Fund II, $532,576.14; District Activity Fund, Funds II, $10,504.15; Capital Outlay Fund, $310,140,952. Even; FSPK Building Fund, Fund III, $1320,137,378.98; Construction Fund, $360,77,009.10; Debt Service Fund, $400, $0; Food Service Fund, $51,918,751.37; fiduciary fund, Fund II, $2,627.70 brings the cash and bank of all funds to $9,609,776.88. And as you can see, we got our November tax collections that were collected in October that we received in November. We're aiming to make those required matches for FSPK, and that should keep any of our bond payments and debt service from being in the negative for the rest of the year. So, got that resolved.
And Ms. Carnes, I know you had a meeting here when Joe Montgomery went over the fiscal year '23 audit report, but since you are standing here, I just want to thank you for those efforts throughout the year because we did have another clean, unmodified report, and appreciate that. When you had noted that one penny, it just takes a penny to throw off this whole balance sheet, doesn't it?
Yes. I worked on this thing all day.
So, we appreciate you and what you do for the district.
I'm glad it's you looking at all that data, those numbers rather than me.
She keeps this big calculator on her desk, the scientific calculator.
Keeps us in control.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda items.
I'll stick to it.
Okay, Mr. Murray.
Yes.
Ms. Wilson.
Yes.
Ms. Higgins-Bobham.
Yes.
Mr. Kazoo.
Yes.
And Ms. Whipper.
Yes.
Bonding capacity update.
This time, Mr. Lincoln Thonert, and again, we appreciate him being with us, and Mr. Emerson and the meal, but he's going to provide a bonding options for the board to consider as we've got kind of three projects that we're really looking at, which are athletic facilities project, the renovation of the old ATC, and the middle school demolition addition project. And this is not for action tonight, but kind of lays out the scope of maybe some path that would get us where we want to be.
Yeah. Thanks once again for having us this evening. I know after a meal, wake ourselves up, we'll look at a bunch of little tiny numbers. But let's just kind of roll up our sleeves and look at a couple different scenarios. It'll be a little bit different than my normal presentation because I want to show you kind of where you're at today and where you're going to be. And so, similar to my normal presentation is to present your bonding capacity exactly similar to walking into your local bank to take out a loan to build your house. On page one of the standout, you'll see each column represents the sum of fiscal year payments, principal plus interest on various projects from the past. If you look at column A and B, if you see anything that says REF on it, that means we have already came back to your district and said, hey, since you originally issued that financing, interest rates have went down, and we have went in and have been able to refinance that for you and save some money. That's something I'm always doing in the background, is monitoring your debt. Of course, turning the news on lately.
You won't have to do that.
We don't have to worry about that right now. Interest rates are up.
And we have to hold them for how many years before you can consider that?
Eight to 10 years. And so, just on my radar, columns C and D, if and when interest rates would kind of turn in a corner and start coming back down, I'm going to be watching your previous bond issues from series 2014, 15, to see if there may be any possibility to refinance. If you jump to the far right-hand column H, you'll see that as we are here today, for roughly the next eight or nine years, the sum of all of your outstanding payments equal $2,900,000 per year. And as you look farther down column H, as we go farther out in time, that number starts to decrease a little bit. Recently, the way I've kind of been, I've used an analogy just with my own personal finances. You know, I think about my car loan, my wife's car loan. At any point in time, your maximum debt load, it seems like it's always going to be just that next few years. You know, if you could get over just that next few years, if you could get over that hump just the next few years, then your debt load's going to start to decrease a little bit. And so, that's why it is normal for all districts and for our own personal finances to always have more debt those next few years until some of your older debt pays off, or if you pay a car loan. So, I just want to point out that that's normal to have a higher debt load in those early years. Now, how are you paying for all this debt, let alone have any money left over to consider new projects? If we'll turn to page two, we'll go over those revenue sources that most of you are familiar with, but I want to go over them in detail. The most familiar for every district, in column A, I refer to it as the mandated nickel. Every district in the state has the base nickel, which is five cents per $100 of assessed property value that goes set aside strictly for building fund purposes. All these numbers, the revenue numbers that I'm going to speak about tonight, are very heavily restricted for building fund purposes. So, no salaries, no operations, that sort of thing. Here in Russell County, column B, your five cents equivalent, based on the most recent assessed property values, generates $696,156 per year. You're unique here in that you have three of those nickels. So, you contribute a 15 cent equivalent for building fund purposes, columns B, C, and D. To be conservative, as you look down those columns, B, C, and D, I want to point out that I'm not projecting any growth in property values. Of course, if we all reconvened here in 20 years, we would hope that the property value in your tax base had grown quite a bit, but for the purpose of just being really conservative, let's just say we hold it constant. And that's why those numbers, those revenue numbers, stay the same all the way down those columns for 20 years. Column E, this is simply $100 of revenue multiplied by your average daily attendance. I do want to point out that, and I'm going to circle back around before I wrap things up and show you how I have been conservative, but I do have to point out that these numbers are based upon the pre-COVID ADA, which we anticipate is going to be lower once we get real numbers. So, just want to point that out, and then again, I'll circle back and show you how I've been conservative. So, based on the pre-COVID ADA multiplied by $100 per student, the Department of Education requires that for projection purposes, we only use 80% of that revenue source, just because they're aware that your ADA is always fluctuating, and they don't want any district to be in a position where they issue bonds and have payments they can't afford. I'm going to show you where I've been conservative several different ways. One of those ways, we're required to only show 80% of your capital outlay dollars in column E. Columns F, G, and H, these are referred to as equalization. Each one of them are tied to your local nickel. So, for example, when you, let me back all the way up with kind of a definition of equalization. So, the goal of equalization within the SEEK formula is to fund each of your students as it relates to buildings and facilities equitably compared to Kenton County, Campbell County, these really rich districts. And so, they created a formula. The formula is if you could add up the taxable value of every piece of property in the entire state and assign, and multiply that by your five cent nickel tax. Add every property up, get that big number, multiply by five cents per $100 assessed property value, and divide it by the total number of students in the state so that you could get a per pupil dollar amount. So then, the formula says, well, we want to fund each student at 150% of what the statewide average nickel would generate. Well, if you go to Campbell County, and if you look at Campbell, if I was doing the same presentation in Campbell County and telling them about their local nickel, the dollars that they get from their local tax base, their properties are, they're so property-rich with their heavy industry and such, they already get above that 150% threshold just from their local taxpayers. So, in their case, this formula says, we're not giving you any money to kind of get you up to that threshold. In almost every other district, the formula gives you some money. And so, here in Russell County, for each of your five cent nickels, the state equalizes it by more than a one-to-one ratio. For every, jumping back to column B, for every $696,156 that you generate per nickel, the state gives you $735,909. Now, if I was in Owlesley County, Powell County, some of the eastern Kentucky districts, that ratio may be four-to-one. The more depressed your property value is, the more equalization you receive. So, we understand that the equalization dollars is a per pupil threshold. And so, let's think about what's been happening statewide. Property values have been on a fairly steady increase the last 10, 15 years. At the same time, the statewide number of students has been going down. So, every two years, when the General Assembly meets and they look at what that threshold is, in other words, how much money they need to give each district to keep the playing field level, that bar keeps going up because the dollars per student that's available for facilities statewide keeps going up. As property values go up and student numbers go down, the total dollar per student has been going up. So, every two years, you typically get an increase in that equalization money. On page two, if you look, I begin with fiscal year '23. If you look at column E, the difference between, column E, row 22, you received $656,000 of equalization in 2022, but then in fiscal year '23, that jumped up to $735,000, which was an increase of about $80,000. Column G, same thing. It was $656,000, then it jumped up to $735,000, was an increase of about $80,000. Column H is a little bit unique. Column H, you did not have until the last General Assembly. They went back and said they were going to equalize one of your growth nickels that previously they had not, and just kind of ignored. They only funded it at 25% for the first two years. That's why column H in 2022 is a lower number. The point, though, is that $80,000 per equalization is what you received in an increase this last biennium. So, we'll just kind of keep that in mind, and I'll come back. The point, though, is that every two years, you do kind of get an increase in revenue from the equalization source. Column I is the sum of everything we've spoke about, the three nickels, your capital outlay, your three equalizations. You'll see it's roughly $4.5 million of revenue that you have. I refer to that as from local sources. Even though your equalization dollars do come to you straight from the state, you would not get those equalization dollars if you weren't first taxing yourselves. And so, that's why I lumped that kind of over on the left-hand side.
Real data, as we always say, the more you help yourself, the more the state's going to help.
Yes, and I'm going to, that's a good segue just to say, you know, there's lists of schools in unmet need and urgent needs. Districts who don't have these extra nickels get looked over. So, you're in a good spot, not only financially, but if there's ever urgent need dollars that come in. So, column I shows you roughly $4.5 million of revenue per year. In column J, we just subtract out the dollars that we know, the debt that's already on the books that you already owe that we seen on page one. That leaves you with column K, which is the net dollars per year over the next 20 years that's available free and clear of your existing payments. Columns L and L, final two revenue sources, comes from the School Facilities Construction Commission. Every two years, the SFCC, they literally print out every district's district facility plan, turn to the last page, and take that sum, there's a number on the last page that adds up all of your unmet need in your priorities, one through four. Priority five doesn't count for this, but they add up all your unmet need, plug it in a spreadsheet, along with every other district's unmet need, and then they take the 60 or 70 million dollars that the General Assembly gives to the School Facilities Construction Commission, and they hand out offers of assistance to each district on a prorata basis based upon the amount of their unmet need. That's why I always stress during the local planning committee process, add as much stuff to your facility plan as you can justify it, even if you don't have bonding capacity, because your slice of the pie stands to be a little bit larger if you do. So, all of that, if we jump to the far right-hand column N, this is what you have as we stand here today, available over the next 20 years. And so, you'll see at the top of column N, those first several years, you've got less money available in those years than you do down towards the bottom of column N, which makes sense that your debt load is the heaviest in those first few years. So, the amount of money that you have free and clear left over is less in those first handful of years. So, what all that means as we're here today, if you'll turn to page three, column C. Page three, column C would be principal payments on a $32 million bond issue. Again, similar to a home mortgage, you're going to be paying less principal in the early years and more interest. And then, as you go down column C, you'll see that the amount of principal that you pay starts to jump up. Column D is the interest rates. If you issued $32 million today, and I'm using conservative interest, I am using conservative interest rates, so you actually have a little bit more if we were able to sell loans today. But if you did issue $32 million, and if at the time you issued them, interest rates really were as high as what I'm using in this scenario, the money you would have left over is in far right-hand column K. Now, I want to imagine for the sake of conversation, let's imagine column K being zeros, because I'm pretty sure that once I get real ADA numbers, so much of your revenue, the equalization formula is driven based on average daily attendance, so that's why I have to be very cognizant of what your ADA is going to reset to.
Prior to this year, the state had even, for our SEEK dollars, we will use an 18-19 data, pre-COVID numbers, and legislature had done that. This, as of right now, although there's a lot of, it won't impact this far, but as far as SEEK goes, there's a lot of conversation going back to legislature because school attendance has been so poor this year. But this is not impacted by what the 18-19.
We have to plan for it, too.
Yeah, exactly.
If you issue bonds for 20 years going out, you have to plan for that reset over. And so, I've held back intentionally $130,000 each year in column K. Again, for conversation purposes, let's imagine that that number goes to zero. So, if you issued $32 million, in essence, you're bonded out for a while. So, how then could we look at, how do we get more than $32,000, I guess is the question? I'm going to hate myself a little bit. I can remember when I first started in business, my boss, I can remember being at a school district in 2005, probably.
With Joe Nance?
With Joe Nance. I can hear, I can remember hearing him saying, we got to think about this now because 2008's right around the corner. Well, so, I'm not going to go out to 2028, but let's take a look at what you could reasonably anticipate in 2024. So, if you'll turn to page four, and I may, I'll admit, I may get lost in the weeds and just have to turn to the back page and summarize, but if you'll turn, on page four, I'm honest. If you'll turn to page four, column F, so what we looked at a second ago was that your equalization revenue increased by about $80,000 per equalization, and you've got three of those. So, roughly, your revenue increased by about $240,000 from fiscal year '22 to fiscal year '23 when they adjusted that formula. The next time they're going to adjust that formula is going to be July 1 of 2024. So, at the risk of upsetting Marla, I, and just for conversation purposes.
She wanted me to put the picture up the screen.
Just for conversation, this is a what-ifs, this is a what-if scenario. You know you're comfortably at $32 million, so this is just a what-if. If you contributed, if you were willing to commit the amounts of money from the general fund that are shown in column F, on the expectation that comes 7/1/24, you get another increase in those equalization dollars. And this is where I have to jump to the summary. Long story short, page five, column C. Page five, column C, if you could, if you could look ahead and contribute in those, the early years are your tight years, and we know why they're tight, because you've got the heaviest debt load. What you're looking at on page five and column C would be a 25-year bond issue that is opposed to a more traditional 20-year bond issue, but it's not completely uncommon these days. Woodford County, I'm not trying to sell anything. Woodford County did just, their high school was using a 30-year term. It would be similar, it is a little bit similar to, do you want to finance your truck for a 15-year loan, or do you want to finance it for five years, six years, you know, typically above seven years, I probably wouldn't want a car loan more than seven years. But several districts are using 25-year bond issues if it checks a lot of their boxes. But to be able to do that, it costs more interest in the early years. And the only way that you could consider, the only way you could consider that is if you went ahead and assumed that you would get a roughly $240,000 increase in revenue, 7/1/24, similar to the increase that you received 7/1/22, which was similar to all the past biennium increases. The worst-case scenario, flipping back to page four, you see that on page five, that gets you to $40 million if you could do a 25-year bond issue. I'm not a negative person, I just always like to start at the worst-case scenario and work forward. And so, the worst-case scenario would be if for the first time since care, there was no increase in equalization dollars at all. The worst-case scenario would be on page four, column F, you would have to contribute those dollars from the general fund. The best-case scenario, which is, I want to think the more likely scenario, is that if you, and I'm not encouraging you to design projects to your maximum bonding capacity of 40 million by any means, we all see what construction prices has been doing. I would, stepping out of my lane a little bit, but I think I would shoot more for a few million dollars less to allow for interest rates to jump up. If you're looking at something more than a year out, it's really hard for us to project where interest rates are going to be. But you do have a path to $40 million with a 25-year bond issue. The worst-case scenario being that you actually have to contribute the amounts in column F from general fund. But the best-case and more likely scenario being that before you actually had to issue bonds, let's say you intentionally delayed the bond sale for the middle school until July 1, 24. The hope then would be, hey, you've designed this project based on this potential scenario, based on this scenario to a higher bonding potential, but you don't actually have to make a bond payment on it until fiscal year '25, which would be 7/1/24. So, the hope would be that, and you would know this once the General Assembly meets in January of 24, you would know by January of '24 what that increase in the equalization dollars would be. And the hope would be that the increase in those equalization dollars would completely offset the amounts in column F that you would technically have to be willing, worst-case, to contribute, to jump up from 32 to 40. So, best case is you would never have to move money over from general fund to building fund. fund. But again, I don't have the crystal ball.
And we keep referencing that $40 million mark is where we kind of feel comfortable of, of being able to do the athletic project, take care of the ATC that we need to do prior to the middle school, and then do the middle school. You know, that, that's where that number is just rough cost estimates.
That's the sum of principal plus interest, that is correct. And to your point, interest rates really have doubled over the last year and a half. They've come down a little bit the last few months. I don't, I don't want to make projections, but I cannot see them continuing to go at the rate that they have. Hopefully, we've leveled off. The rates I've used for projections are a little, they're, they're higher than what they would be today. Who knows if they're high enough to cover what they'll be a year from now? It's, yeah, it's possible you could end up with only 39. I can, I can tell you before I came, when I, when I put this together, your number was a little bit higher than 40. And I said, well, I don't know when they're selling bonds, so I want to be more conservative. I don't know exactly how many students they're losing, I want to give it a good, a good educated guess, I want to be conservative. So 40 is a conservative number, doesn't mean it's not safe for you to take that number and say, well, we want to be even more conservative, plan for 38, 39. And that was a lot of information. Real quick, back to page four, column F. As I, as I had mentioned, you know, the, those first few years are, that's what, that's where the hurdle is to get us from 32 million to 40 million. So that's why only those first four or five years would you need, really, you can scratch out, you wouldn't need to put any, any money in fiscal year '24 at all, because we wouldn't be selling bonds that quick. But so from fiscal year '25 to '28, it would be roughly 225,000, and then, then once you kind of get over that hump, that number would, would go down a little bit. But again, we would hope your revenue increases by more than that available, 7/124.
I think a lot of it goes back to what you said earlier, Lincoln, it'd be the first time CARE was winning 1990, of, of the, that additional amount did kick in on those viadim budget sessions. It would be very out of the ordinary. And again, that would be best case scenario, the worst case scenario would be that we would be stuck with, with coming up, of these dollars out of general fund to make up the difference.
Yep, so the way, the way the board order would, would be worded if you did something like that, it would say, board agrees to commit up to $225,000 of general fund for building fund purposes as needed. So that, what that as needed, those two words are important because that means you can grow out of it. You're not committing general fund dollars forever on. You know, in that worst case scenario, that the first time since CARE, they don't raise equalization, you know, what's the chance, what's the chances of them not raising it two years in a row? You know, come, come 7/126, you know, some districts will look forward more than just two years. Anyway, that was a lot of info. Any, any questions, please reach out to Dr. Ford, I'm glad to listen.
That, and, and again, prior to, really, that comes into play with reaching that 40 when we're timed for the middle school decision with the bond. Right now, the athletic facility, and then we need to, we'll soon be addressing the ATC, that decision would have to come into play with those two projects. Well, except being in the back of mind that we know that we won the $40 million total project between all three.
I can give you any, I can look out however far in the future we want to look, but knowing those three projects, what your current estimate is for the middle school, I, I don't, I don't want to, I don't want to, I don't want to take on face value, current estimates, you definitely need to plan for some wiggle room.
Sure.
Of course. And so I think that 40 million allows for a little bit of.
Has the state ever cut back what they give you after they use, can they go back?
No, not, not of, not of those sources.
Oh, okay.
Maybe of your SEAC dollars, but not of.
The SEAC dollars, yes, they have. But once they commit on this part, and I think they know you're already committed to the bonds.
They know you're issuing bonds based on those dollars, yes.
But that's a good question. They do do that in SEAC, Ms. Brenda, and we've had that done, haven't we, Ms. Marla, on, on SEAC dollars? But they don't on this because, I mean, the district, I mean, that would be, that would just tear districts up if they had to make up that difference. But no, that's a good point. Once, once the state commits the money, they've always been locked in. I've never, but that's a, that's a great point to make.
Does that mean we can't sell bonds for the middle school until '25?
I don't know what track, what would be, what would be the soonest that you would, the short answer is no, you would, you would be able to sell them as soon as they would be ready, but it causes me to ask, when would, you know, it's possible that, no, what I, what I was saying about the 7/124 was if you waited until, if you waited until 7/124 to sell the bonds, then you probably would not need to move any general fund at all because you wouldn't have a bond payment until 7/120, until fiscal year '25.
But if we sold them beforehand, we would still have that resolution language in reference in case we were to contribute to this language or that dollar. But if we, if it worked out or whatever reason happened, then we didn't sell it beforehand, that language would not even be necessary.
Right, you, you, you could sell, you could sell $40 million of bonds tomorrow if you committed that 225,000. You know, House of 678, which cut KDE out of a lot of the oversight, we still have to abide by from the finance side, we abide by just almost everything we did before. And when KDE seen BG1s from districts that, let's just say, let's say all three of your projects summed up to 40 million, KDE would call us and say, okay, we see these BG1s submitted by Russell County for $40 million, you know, before we, before we start looking too deep into them, Lincoln, will you send me their bonding potential, prove that they have that amount of bonding? And so that's where I would show them, this is what they've got, this is the board order. And sometimes this is a year or year and a half in advance of when you would actually sell, sell bonds. That's the only reason, that's the only reason a board order would be necessary.
Here's, here's, and I think the better way to phrase it maybe is, as soon as things got ready, if we were ready to do it, and we had all the plans, through schematic design and everything, prior to this 7/21, 7/12024 date, the board order would, would have that, and we would roll along with their projects. If it, due to just the planning phase and everything, it was after that July 1 date, then we would sell bonds minus that language. Regardless, we're still at that $40 million mark, either, either way. It's either committing this or not committing this. But even if we're committing this, the chances of having to do it are just, in my opinion, I think you would agree, are so slim.
Well, what I'm looking at is the date of the middle school because it is not getting any better.
And we have to get that ATC recorded before doing middle school because I want other places to carry the buildings down. Give me your basement.
To answer your question, if you did, if you actually had the middle school designed, bids were open, that's what we were here considering today, and you're ready to sell bonds tomorrow, you would, in that case, have a bond payment in 2024, and you would have to use 200,000 of general fund for fiscal year '24. But the hope then would still be that once we get to fiscal year '25, you wouldn't have to move general fund dollars over. That would be if you had the bids ready and you sold bonds tomorrow. Reality, you're not, you're not going to have a full year's worth of payments in fiscal year '24. So it's really fiscal year '25 that we have to worry about.
And the earliest that middle school project would happen would be fiscal year '24. So we would be past that mark of having to make that for definite.
At that point, you would only have half a year's worth of interest on the middle school, wouldn't have to supplement with general fund dollars for fiscal year '24.
This is a little more complicated than what we typically dealt with on projects because we've got three, and we have that, that amount of money, and then some conditions of, of what we hope happens in 2024, 2026. It, it, it's a little bit different than what we've talked about in the past on a, on a typical bonding project.
I don't realize how important vaguely attendance is.
Oh, absolutely, absolutely. It drives it. There's KSBA, the e-meetings experiencing some hiccups tonight.
I don't mind.
I'll go to move them.
Yeah, Ms. Carroll was texting me that.
Yeah, average daily attendance is very, very important when you're calculating your equalization. So I have about a half a percent already built in to that 40 million scenario. If it went up one and a half, if it went up a full one and a half percent above where we're at now, that probably would drop your $40 million down closer to 38. Yeah, that, that would be about a $2 million, $2 million drop if it went up a full percent and a half above where it's at now. It would, you would still end up paying them, you still end up, you would still end up paying out just about all, all the dollars that you've got available, they just wouldn't go as far. Instead of being, instead, instead of bonding 40, instead of bonding 40 million, you'd only bond 38 million. But I've been conservative by a decent amount, and I would never allow your bonding to go down that much without being here right then telling, hey, rates went up a little bit.
Plus the cost of the building materials.
Plus the cost of the building materials, yep. At some point, there got to be some relief, I don't know where that's at.
And, and part of it has on the, Mr. Branscombe or Mr. Larry or Jonathan can speak to that, part of the building, some of the materials, wood for instance, that's, that stabilized some compared to what, compared to what it was. And on the, of course, we don't want interest rates to go up, but interest rates sometimes will stop other building and help the process come back down.
Yeah, and to that point, yeah, there's been several large projects that have been temporarily tabled because of, eventually it seems like the economy will fix itself when those projects are pulled.
I think it's still worth always noting, Lincoln, and you did at the very beginning, regardless, the money that we're talking about here tonight is not going to go for anything but construction. You know, it's not going to pay your light bill, it's not going to pay for textbooks, et cetera, et cetera. It's, we're, we're talking about restricted dollars on whatever path we ultimately take. And we wanted, I felt it was important for us to have this conversation tonight because we're going to talk about the bids for the athletic project, and again, we have to take care of the renovations of the old area technology center prior to the middle school because we don't have any places for all those people that's behind the middle school and the classes that's behind the middle school when those buildings come down, when we start the work on the middle school. So everything kind of leads to, sequence to another, another project, if you will.
You know, I use the term bonded out, that's always relevant, and these numbers are always sort of a moving target. Every two years, there is that increase historically of equalization dollars, even if, even if you kind of latched on to this what if scenario, went ahead and, and made plans for your increase in 2024, every two years thereafter, you know, you say, well, if we do this, well, what about, what about a roof replacement, what about this, what, you know, these other things that are going to come up? In addition to that extra equalization revenue every two years, you also stand to continue receiving offers of assistance from the School Facilities Construction Commission every two years as well. So don't, don't let that term bonded out really hit as hard as it sounds, is what I say.
It would be a different conversation here tonight if the state legislature hadn't equalized that third nickel for us. I mean, that, kudos to them for that, because we'd had it on the books for a long time, it just hadn't been equalized, and that, that changed our whole bonding capacity when the legislature did that.
Yep. Thank you, guys.
Thank you, Lincoln, yes, we appreciate you.
We appreciate your support.
We appreciate you too, Wendell. Again, the, the big heavy, and Lincoln, you correct me if I'm wrong, the big heavy conversation or, or decision making comes of whether or not general fund and all that is when we're at that point for the middle school. The, the, I think, I think it's important to note, in my opinion, this conversation tonight is in no way stopped our work towards our middle school, it's just that when we're there, ready to sell the bond, how are we going to make that work? Are we going to quasi-commit some general fund and then know that 2024 is going to fix itself? Or are we going, you know, that, that's the conversation. Am I saying that right, Lincoln? It's, it's not stopping our work at all towards the middle school. I just, I just think it's very important to be transparent that there's a lot of different moving parts on making our bonding capacity work.
Well, we need all three.
We do need all three, that's right, yep, yep.
I mean, I think.
And it helped us a little bit on the initial cost estimates on the old area technology center because we were able to use ARP or SRR funds, you know, to do that roof. So that was, you know, over $300,000 right there saved from that, so that, that will help, help offset that. So there's no action to be taken tonight when, if we move forward with the athletic bids, and then we can come back in a special call board meeting and, and discuss the, the bonding, do the resolutions, and the finance corporation, et cetera, we'll need to, we'll need to meet prior to that and do that. You all are familiar with selling the bonds, so again, Lincoln, thank you, appreciate you.
Who knows, you know, TV talks about recession, economy going down the toilet, if that happens, if that happens, the feds are going to be cutting interest rates, and, you know, you're, just like Mr. Murray was pointing out, if interest rates go up, your bonding capacity goes down. But if interest rates go down, your current 32 million, who knows? Your, your current 32 million without doing anything else would go up if interest rates go down. I don't, I don't want to wish pain on anybody or a bad economy, but if that, if that happens, your bonding capacity is likely to go up instead of down in a bad economy. It sounds, it sounds kind of counterintuitive, but the interest rates are so important to your bonding capacity, a bad economy really would increase your bonding capacity.
Yeah, I mean, it does, yep, yep, absolutely does.
So there's always that chance that you get all your stuff without having to even consider that what if, it's building materials.
And I like that conversation where Mr. Murray had pointed out there, we're all talking about those interest rates of, our payments would remain the same, but we just wouldn't get as much, it wouldn't go as far with that. And again, that would be really pertinent when it's time for that middle school conversation because our current bonding capacity will not impact, you know, if we still want to move forward with the athletic project, which I think we do, and, and the ATC, and then we will be ready for the middle school discussion. Yes, ma'am.
Review for possible approval, bids for Russell County Schools Athletic Facility upgrades.
So now, Mr. Jonathan Smith is here, he's going to talk to the board. We've received updated bid quotes for the athletic project with a reduction of 758,618 from the original bids, and there's some different variables within that, and you all have those bid tabulations, and Mr. Smith's going to talk about some, some different options.
If you all remember from our last meeting, you know, there was bids received, and we chose at that time to reject those bids, we entered into competitive negotiation with the low bidders that we had on each of the bid packages. We did that, bids were received back last Thursday, December the 15th, with modifications like we talked about at the last board. with modifications like we talked about at the last board meeting. Some items were amended on the drawings and specifications that were sent back out to all the contractors and they turned in revised bids with those, those changes. We've actually added a couple of alternates to look at that you have before you there. So all the bid tabulations you see there, if you look at the top, there's three, three different scenarios. You have just the base bid as you see there. You also have the base bid and alternate two, and you have base bid with alternate two and four. If you remember back, alternate two was, there's brick on that retaining wall with the baseball field and that's a deduct to take that brick off. And we use a form liner when we pour the concrete so that the wall looks like stone when we're done. You still have a good look on the wall.
Be textured.
Be textured. It'll look a lot like the wall that's over in front of the technology center right now. It just doesn't have that brick on it, you know, light brick. It's extra light, it's extra materials, so there is cost associated with that.
But still a really good, nice looking wall.
Still a concrete wall. It's not gonna, not gonna hurt anything. It's, you're still gonna get a look, good look. It's just not gonna be brick.
To Mr. Smith's credit, the whole, every conversation he's always had is how can we reduce the cost and still have a really good project, you know?
On this bid, one of the items that we did look at, we left the pad for the tennis, the dirt pad, because that material has to be moved. That's equated into the whole scenario of the earthwork. But to get the dollars down from the bids before, we did eliminate the concrete, the surface and the lighting from tennis and also the fence. That itself, to add tennis back, is probably in excess of a half a million dollars to add tennis back. So that's a, that's a big portion of the reduction in bids you see is eliminating tennis. And as you remember back, I think we said at the last board meeting, when we did the original budget, tennis wasn't included in the budget. That came into play, you know, later on in the scenario after drawings were done, we were ready to go out to bid. We had to went go back in and add tennis to it. You know, that BG three was already done and already approved. So tennis wasn't included in the overall budget to begin with, but we did bid it out. We did put it in the drawings, went out to bid. And obviously, as I said, that's probably over a half a million dollars of what come out of this was equated to what tennis would cost to add. So they are still getting part of that. They are getting the pad build where the new tennis courts would be later on, when more money is available. So the dirt work's going to be done. All they've got to do is come in and put the drainage in, pour the concrete, put the fence up, install the lights, put the surface on, and then they'd be ready to play tennis. So.
With that initial work being done, just thinking, whatever direction the board wants to go and thinking about the middle school, if existing work's being done on the site, KDE, would they let that be a package to be considered?
Possibly. I don't know. We would have to talk to, probably talk to Marcus and Mr. Dunbar to see. But I would think because of it being athletic and it being on that, it's on the same site, same facility, that's a possibility.
And serves middle school.
And it serves middle school too. They use it. That could, portion of it could be added to the middle school.
I was just thinking, you know, let's be, let's be honest. We could do it right now. That's not the issue. We have the bonding capacity to do it. It may hinder our opportunity with the middle school if, if we were to do it now. But if we, if we wait and don't include it now and look at it again when we do the middle school, then there might be an opportunity, things, a different scenario where it works. I was thinking of that then.
One of the best takeoffs, I mean, that dirt, come on now, we played on grass for years. That's more than that for you. And that, that turf is a lifetime cost. It ain't, it ain't paper, paper. It's a few years. It's got to be, took up, been out, it's only been, what, ten years?
Their initial warranty, I think, was ten or fifteen.
I think it is, at least ten.
At least ten or fifteen. Yep. It is a cost. It is a cost. There is maintenance cost to it and there is a replacement cost to it. But you also have to think about, if you do have grass field, you got chemicals, you got reseeding, you got watering, all the stuff we've got to do with grass too. So there is, there is some trade-off between the two. You know, you know, if you looked at that, it would totally change the project itself because we were doing turf on the baseball, turf on the football. So that would totally change the project.
That's out, Horizon.
What's that?
The tennis courts are out for right now.
In the bids that I've provided to you all for base bid off of two and four, that does not include the tennis courts. It includes the pad, the dirt pad, will soak in grass, be ready to use later on once it's good. But the tennis courts is not included in the numbers I have before you tonight.
We didn't build tennis courts while we need the pad, so I mean, it doesn't matter. We're going to have it.
The dirt, though, that we're, because we're having to do so much dirt work to do the field material around the baseball field, build the football field, we've got some of that excess dirt that we've got to do something with. So that was what was equated into building the football field, getting our grades right. We've got that excess dirt and that's what allowed us to build the pad.
They're going to be there on site anyway, right there with it.
Because there is going to be a new walkway built down from the weight room where the football team will come right now down. All of that grade had to be figured in, so we had to do something with the dirt. So that's the, and that was the ideal place to put the, the pad in for the tennis courts because from a room standpoint, around the high school, keep it as close to the high school as possible, that was the best scenario of where the tennis courts could be. And we had the excess dirt, had to do something with it anyway. But those are, those are the numbers. And in the numbers, as you see, if you look at base bid and alternate two and four, one of the items we considered as an alternate, it's going to cost a little bit of money to get one of the, I guess, the, I guess you could call it perks that we were providing to the visitor side of the field, was we were running water and electric to the other side of the field. I think Mr. Carpenter said that was one of the things that, you know, he wanted to provide for that visiting team, be able to have electricity over on that side and also have a water source over there. So that is run over there. That is included in the bid tabulation you see for base bid, alternate two and four. That includes leading the electric water to the visitor side.
The electric was already in there as the base bid.
No, water was in, water was in as a base bid. Electrical, it was an add, this is fourteen-eight that you see there. But that number, six million, two seventy-nine, seven thirty-two, that includes water and electric to the visitor side that we, we proposed as an alternate. But with, with the cost, after discussions, for this point, we'd suddenly leave that in.
Well, what'd be more beneficial to the students, tennis courts or the electric water on the parking lot?
What's that?
What'd be more beneficial to the students? The turf field, I mean, the tennis court versus the turf and water and electric on that field?
Well, the water and electric, it's probably thirty-seven, thirty-eight thousand dollars. That's about what that's going to cost. That's, that's something that can be.
I booked the turf a big waste. I had some conversations with a few backers, a few dealers, but all against it. Had one that was falling trees. Trust it, bro. They had to run it. And I was still hungry. I just don't get it. I mean, I go a little bit, I go a bit of bowling, I don't think that's fair.
Jonathan, is, is this bid down where we can realistically look at it to cost for our?
This is, I mean, we went back to each one of these contractors to make sure that there's, we've tried to cut everything that is not needed, that is not going to hinder the project, that the public's not going to see anything like that. This is probably, this, this is your best scenario for the bids that, in the way the market is right now, for what bids we've got.
And we've got, still got the things that we were most interested in.
Yes, we might change any of that. The things that we have changed, nobody, unless you get into the details of the plans, and it's nothing that's going to affect anything on playing field, you know, the bleachers, electric part, none of that, it's not going to affect any of that. This is your best scenario to get. It took seven hundred, this took seven hundred and forty-eight thousand dollars out of the project's went to.
And includes things like, if you want to mention the fence on the retaining wall.
Yes, the, the fence on the retaining wall was that decorative aluminum fence that was just there at the baseball field they had previous. We changed that to just the black vinyl coating chain link, which is everywhere else now. I mean, it was always around the football field. Everywhere else, it's just all going to match down. Because it's obviously cheaper, the aluminum.
What was total bids on this, if you can?
Six million, two seventy-nine, seven thirty-two. Last time, we were seven million, twenty-eight thousand, three fifty. Seven hundred and forty-eight thousand dollars difference.
Tennis courts don't cost that much. When the green went down, it was in there, but we still have seven thousand, seven million. Nine, a half a million dollars, and I saved four one thousand, three hundred and eighty-five thousand. We should have cut back on, let some upset on budgets for a while. I mean, I've never seen a toll before anyway. Of course, I've never been there, but I'm going. But I would, the people's brought my, to my attention, when this was the question's asked. And you make chants. It should be.
You, you don't have that breakout right now of what the tennis courts.
When we eventually vote to do this project, if I'm not mistaken, my vote was if. If we add them to it, if we don't, I'm going to send my vote to Bill Dooley's side.
It's, it's over a half a million dollars out there today because I know the concrete law was four and some thousand. So we got to add the surface, the fence, the lighting, here in excess of a half a million dollars. I mean, the, the biggest portion of this deduct was, took, catch one time. There were a few other items that we changed, the fence and a few other things. We, you know, the paving that was down in front of the bus garage that we were just doing because we were there, we cut some of that back. Just got the main road coming in, then the new parking area. So paving did go down.
But some things, as we get into it, like we kind of talked about, we may look at doing, you know, just go ahead and doing all that, but having just the, the base instead of the top surface, you know, we could, we could consider stuff like that too.
That could be a change order later. You could deduct that out if you so choose.
Yeah.
Right now, it's got base top and everything.
Right, right. But we could cover more territory if we just did a base and then, and then see how we, how we, how we put it out. Again, it, it's not that we don't have the bonding capacity for, for the tennis courts. It's just what that may do for, for middle school. It's, you know, it's the pleasure of the board, what that would look like. If we were to go that tonight, Mr. Jonathan, and, and we say, you know, let's go ahead and add the tennis courts, how could we make that work and think about the language for the, for the bids that we got accepted, put together right now? Because our initial bids did include it, minus all, some of this other stuff that you all worked on, fencing and pavement and stuff like that.
And it would change, it would change the bids on some of those other packages. I mean, it would, we would have to go back and do that competitive negotiation again because there would be, there would be changes in those numbers and, you know, we have to have that official bid form from, from the bidders, the KDE form proposal, you know, with their number on it. That's what we go contract on. So we would have to go back to that competitive negotiation piece again and revise it to add the tennis court piece back to it.
And that's going to put us behind, isn't it?
More than we already are.
My real deal, but I say we go ahead with it right now and then look for that vote if we can. Anyone else got an opinion?
I really want to do the tennis courts. But I mean, I've had two or four people that's asked me, and I thought we was going to do it.
Make a, make a, make a motion.
What do you mean make a motion?
To go ahead with this.
We can, we can.
If, if you all really want, let's think about how we would phrase that because.
Let me, let me thump this out here. If, if you all real, if the tennis courts are, okay, let's do the tennis courts. The bids that you have tonight, and I've got a recommendation later for you, do not include the tennis courts. We can accept the bids as is tonight and before we can start, we can issue a proposal request to the bidders that's affected by the tennis courts, which would also, we'd have to go back to Musco and add the lighting. We could issue a proposal request to add that portion of the project.
Well, it would, off the top of my head, except for mods and whatnots, if you correct me if I'm wrong.
It would affect the gym trades package. It would affect the site work package. It would affect the electrical package and it would affect Musco. I think those are.
So mods and.
Well, that would, that would hold us all up.
No, he's saying to move forward.
No, we, we could move forward with the understanding that, you know, we got to, we're going to have to go to contract based on the number, which is the number that you have tonight. Then we could issue, right off the bat, issue a proposal request, which would be a change order to these packages that we work out that we'd have to add money back to add the tennis courts back to the project. Lincoln, you jump in if you think that is going to make KDE squall from.
They're not going to, they're, KDE's not going to care on that part. No.
I mean, it's going, it would just be a change order.
Well, I, I think we would lose, here's, here's why I think, Mr. Murray and the rest of the board, that. Well, we could move forward on it.
Football season. But I'm saying you're going to, project would not even, it wouldn't be even bidding to play if we pushed it off much longer.
If you want to change your later bid, if we go ahead and put tennis, it's going to change it all again. So it's still everything.
No, but they could start that initial work.
If it affects it now, it's going to affect you if we ever put them, which we don't put now, we won't.
Well, you all could approve these base bids with the authorization for the alternate or for the, not alternate, proposal request or the tennis courts.
Too many words, man. It's too many proposals.
No, no. Issue the, issue the proposal request for the tennis. I'm concerned about the time on that, Mr. Murray. If, if we approve, if you all approve the motion with the bids this evening, with the approval of a proposal request, that would include the tennis courts.
That's all right. I'm going to vote though, if it does include.
That would allow site work, a lot of this stuff to get going while we're working up the price.
That would include the tennis courts, Mr. Murray. It's just that we would, they would have to come back and we would then subsequently approve the dollar amounts. No, that is for now. That would be included for now. I, I'm just too concerned with the time for that, Mr. Murray.
At the same time, if you put that proposal request, if there was any other ideas like doing a way to the surface on blacktop and some other things, they'll pay for that. You can do that at the same time with one proposal request. I mean, you can have made up your minds if you're going to build this tennis court and with it. It's just a matter of how much it's going to cost you, whether it's four, half a million dollars or whether it's four hundred thousand.
Yeah, right.
I mean, pretty much know you want the tennis courts. It's just a matter of when we add them in, if that's the board's understanding.
Well, not, not if we add them in or when. We add them into, we add them into this project. That's Mr. Murray's, I don't want to speak for you, Mr. Murray, but I think your concern is that it wouldn't be part of this project. But that's not at all what I'm saying.
You got too many people. No, thank you, there is. I say with people, a lot of people was going to complain, says, come on now, give us that priority. One of them just make the bank, it was more than sixty-six and four, let's move now.
Sure, if we don't get started, though, it's not going to be ready. Well, there is. We want to use it.
Well, it's, playing with bills, one day we'll use it.
But the football field is the most time sensitive with the weather and everything to get going.
Why's that sense of, go west, take the building, four yards from there. Then with the second hand, getting still necessary.
How long do you think it would take to get those, about first of the year we can meet back for the tennis?
For the proposal, I'd have to get back to Doug and them to find out, you know, we've got a, we'd have to add some, we'd have to issue a proposal request and then have to revise some drawings, so. I'd have to get back with Doug and them to find out. I mean, that wouldn't be anything that's gonna affect us going contract now based on this number and getting that work started. I mean, cause the pad itself is already in there.
Right.
We wouldn't be pouring concrete, which would be the, well, put the storm drainage in, that's, I mean.
You have to do the pad that's already in there.
We'd be several months down the road before we would have to do any work associated with the tennis courts that's not included in this number. Like I said, the pad's got, it's gotta get built now, because that's where the dirt's gonna get. So, it's not gonna affect anything, I mean, if it's maybe, if we get those numbers back, it's not gonna affect anything.
No, cause you're still building the pad.
We're still building the pad anyway, we have to.
Actually, one thing we was trying to do is building that pad too, is because it's back in the fifties and went out there and they were all the place to play ball. Still was intense, and it's been in, but it's because it's too high. And all you own, behind this wall, all you own is hollers. If we don't build that pad now, you'll have the hollers dirty and stuff later. It's gonna cost you five, ten thousand dollars for it, we're gonna have. And we, we just kept asking, but, you know, the pad needs to be there as far as supporting them all the rest of it.
That's a really good point, Larry and Jonathan, that even if it takes a little bit to get those numbers together, that work on the pad for the tennis courts is still moving along, along, cause that's part of the base bid. Yeah.
Like I said, that, we gotta do something with that dirt, that's, that's how it's played in, get it to grow.
I'll go through holler, tell us, go over there.
No, we need it here.
I know, but you'd always come back and get it there, but it's gone.
They might need that dirt, that, that holler when they build one twenty-seven, Mr. Murray. I said, they might need that holler when they build one twenty, work on one twenty-seven again.
Now.
Well, no, they're done past your house now.
They'll buy that.
That's right, that, that's right, that's right.
Can't find Gerald's house now.
Well, you can't find his shop to shop by now.
You have, you have.
Is there, can you think of any other way to solidify the tennis courts beside the proposal request and the motion?
Well, I'll make a motion, and we take the bids that you got now, the scenario.
Based on, uh.
The bid recommendation letter.
Recommendation letter.
And then get a change order for.
Issue a proposal request to add the tennis courts back.
Thanks, Mr.
So let me, let me clarify that, Ms. Wicker, accept the bid recommendation letter and then issue a proposal request to add the tennis courts to this existing project, okay?
And you might say, uh, tennis courts and all associated work with it, which that's the lighting piece and fencing and everything else.
Can you read that? Mrs. Wicker's motion is to accept the current bid recommendation letter and issue a proposal request to include the tennis courts and all associated costs with the current athletic project. So, I, I don't wanna speak for anybody else, but Mr. Murray, I'm real, real comfortable that that is.
I think I'm, before, before last month, yeah.
Well, I mean, that's gonna be in the board motion though. I mean, if you all, if that's approved, that would be in this motion that Ms. Wicker just said.
Any one second?
I'll second it.
Mr. Murray? Ms. Wilson?
Yes.
Ms. Higgins-Bortham?
Yeah, if, I feel bad to do that, I will.
Mr. Kazook?
Yes.
And Ms. Wicker?
Yes.
Okay.
Cause you're gonna actually wait to sell bonds until you got the bids, you'd be able to start the work with cash and wait to sell bonds until you get the bid on tennis court once. That's the size of a bird. But there'd be no slowdown in work, work would start immediately with cash.
There would be any.
We have never.
On the tennis court probably for two or three years.
Because it'd take that long for the earthwork part?
Well, we'd have storm, we'd have to put it out.
Yeah.
Storm, we'd get it. Any other questions?
Thank you, sir.
Comprehensive district improvement.
Mrs. McFaul went up there and snuck around to the front. So the local education agency, and you all are familiar with this, has seen, uh, the district improvement plan for a number of years, and you reviews and approves the comprehensive district improvement plan, or what we refer to as the C D I. The twenty-two, twenty-three Rus County Schools Improvement, Comprehensive District Improvement Plan states the overall goals and provides improvement strategies and activities that addresses identified needs for the district. And Mrs. McFaul is here, uh, I know you all already have this in your packet along with your, uh, with the actual C D I plan, uh, she's gonna provide the overview with it. Uh, I wanna do, draw your attention for what was in your board packet, the presentation, what we, what's referred to as the superintendent gap assurances, and the actual, again, the C D I plan. Ms. McFaul?
I just wanna start by saying that we have had two public meetings about this where we went into great detail. One was in November and one was in December, but this is just gonna be a brief summary of the C D I. As you see, this is the timeline for both the schools and the district. This is something that's mandated by K D E, and you can see that it says, you know, comprehensive district and school planning. So we're in phase three right now, we've already went through phase two and phase three in depth of the public meetings. And basically, you know, you have to do the planning part before you get to the improvement part. So within the executive summary, just to give you a quick overview of that, it's just basically a snapshot of your district. What does it look like? What are the demographics? What are maybe some unique challenges? And, you know, for us and everyone across the state, the last couple of years, you know, we've really talked about the impact of COVID. But luckily, we're starting to kind of phase those, uh, types of phrases and language out, and we're going back to just what are, what are our demographics? What are our needs? When it goes to our needs assessment in phase two, yes, we do look at the state assessment data, but we look at multiple sources of data, because just like the state says, it's not a one-stop shop. You don't just look at those test scores, like we were talking a few minutes ago about the A D A. Attendance is so important, so, you know, you look at those chronic absenteeism reports, you look at behavior reports, you look at the social, emotional needs of the students, along with the test scores. So all of that is involved in phase two, and based on what your needs assessments show for the district and for the schools, then that's where you come into phase three, and you start your comprehensive district improvement plan. The other thing that Mr. Ford mentioned just a second ago was the superintendent gap assurance, and all this is, and you saw that it was a very brief, um, packet within this. We just have to report if we have met our achievement gaps with our subpopulations. We did not, um, it's not uncommon for, again, districts across the state, districts across the nation, because we've had this interruption in learning, and it has affected the kids. So all we had to do was just say, did one or more schools in your district fail to meet that goal? And we did, but we're working on it, just like everybody else across the United States. The main thing, uh, in our comprehensive district improvement plan is focusing on these seven goals, and these are the required goals that the state has set for us. They overhauled kind of the accountability system this year, and within this, they changed the goals up a little bit. The first two are very similar, uh, the wording is a little different, they used to say proficiency for reading and math, so now it just says state assessments. Uh, the one about science, social studies and writing, it used to be called separate academic indicator, but basically, they realize, we all predicted it, it's come true. That, uh, you know, we, we have fallen behind a little bit, so we, we gotta play catch-up for a little while. So proficiency is still our goal, it's not necessarily worded in there, but when we look at our goals in a few minutes, you'll see that that is still the standard, proficiency for all students. And it is across all content areas. Uh, the achievement gap goal is still the same, so this goes back to the superintendent's gap assurance. So we're looking at students like, um, students with disabilities, our free reduced lunch, our E L students, all of those fall within the achievement gap, and we want those students to be performing as well as everyone else. So that's been a constant goal for multiple years, and we're trying to close that gap. The fourth goal is something new this year, English learner progress. Obviously, English learners fall under the achievement gap, but the achievement gap goal, they are talking about content areas, reading, math, science, social studies and writing. Are they growing? Are they moving? With this goal, it is specific to the access test, and for the access test, it is a measure of students speaking, writing, reading, and listening in English, which is a whole other challenge for this subpopulation. So the state thought that it was important enough to make it a whole separate goal. Quality of school climate and safety, that's also a new goal this year. There is a survey on, um, the state assessment, and it's just a series of questions that elementary, middle and high answer, and they just, you know, they're questions like, does my teacher expect the best of me? Do I feel safe in school? If I have a problem, do I know an adult I can go to and talk to? Those types of things, and then they give us a score on that, and then obviously we work to improve it. The last two are basically, um, high school goals, post-secondary readiness and graduation rate. Post-secondary readiness is basically making sure that all of our kids are either college and/or career ready. So I'm not gonna read all of this to you, but basically, this is our first goal on reading and math, and you can see in the red there, elementary, middle and high is represented. And when we have our goals, we have a three-year goal, two percent each year is what we're aiming for. So over that three-year period, we are hoping for a six percent increase in reading and math proficiency scores. It's the very same thing for goal two, which is science, social studies and writing, and they did change up writing. Um, we do have the on-demand portion as well as, um, and editing and mechanics, we've had it, it's gone away, it's come back, it's back again. So there are two phases within the writing component, if they combine together, you get a score. Goal three, this is the achievement gap goal, and this was the same way last year. The state's not requiring us to actually set a goal, like a six-year or a three-year goal, but they are making us come up with an objective. So if you break it down to just a one-year objective, we're looking for all of our students that fall in an achievement gap accountability area to come up two percent. This is our new goal with the English, um, language students, and this is recommended from the state. It's a new goal, people had lots of questions about it, and the state department gave us some guidance toward the end of October, that this is what they felt like would be fair, uh, something that was doable. We're gonna see at the end of the year, but over three years, they recommended that we have our kids to increase if they're speaking, writing, listening, uh, and reading of E, of English by one point five levels. So for one year, that is a half of a level. Goal five, this is our quality of school climate and safety survey, so they give you an indicator score. It's kind of difficult to separate the two, because they give you one big combined score, but again, we're looking at those questions that the kids answer. We're talking to them, one, just to make sure, did they understand what the question was asking? Sometimes they don't even understand the vocabulary, so that's part of the battle right there. And then, uh, another thing is sometimes they don't know everything behind the scenes. So we feel like a lot of it is just communicating a little bit more with our students to let them know what's going on and make sure that they understand. Goal six, this is our post-secondary readiness, and you can see, uh, we're doing very well in post-secondary readiness. This is when the kids are graduating, that they're either college and/or career ready, so you can see if we meet our six-year goal, we're gonna be really close to a hundred percent. Same thing with graduation, we did fall just a little bit, but we're still above the state, and again, in three years, if we are on track, we would have a hundred percent graduation rate, which would be fantastic. So what does all this mean? Basically, we want to increase proficiency for all students in all content areas. We want to achieve, or to produce those achievement gaps with disability, economically disadvantaged, and our English language learner. We want to improve the quality of school climate and safety, so just having those conversations with the students and seeing what we can do to improve that for them. And we want to increase the post-secondary readiness and graduation rate. So that all sounds great and good, but how are we gonna do it? There is something that K D E released several years ago, they're called key core work processes. These are basically evidence-based strategies and activities, and they say, hey, if you want your district or your school to improve, use these things. Some districts and schools jumped on board, others have not. So basically, it's the new expectation to include these in our improvement plans. There are six of them, and you'll see in these bullets, the red word that pops up, that is basically the key core work process. So the first one is related to standards. So even though some of our students have fallen a little behind, we still want to make sure that we are teaching those grade level standards to those students, so that they have the opportunity to get back on track. The second thing is all about instruction. We've been very fortunate, uh, to have S R funding from the federal government, and this has allowed us to buy some high-quality instructional materials for our teachers. We've not been able to do that for many, many years, and this is helping them to do work, work process one, to deliver those standards to the students. We also had a great, um, professional learning over the summer, we had someone come in and talk to us about just the basics of teaching, good things, things that our teachers already know. But when you're getting back in the groove, sometimes you just need to be reminded of things, so we're doing lots of things to help our teachers focus on standards and instruction. The next one is all about assessments, just like I said earlier, you don't just look at the state assessment. We have universal screeners that we do within our schools three times a year. This is a great tracking system to see if our students are mastering the standards or not. We also come together in P L Cs, teachers bring in like their formative and their summative data, so you can see, are our kids making progress, or are they not? So you don't wait until the end of the year, and you get a big shock. So within this, while we're looking at the assessments, we're naming and claiming students, a lot of these are falling in that achievement gap that we're really trying to close. We provide targeted and individualized instruction for them, and then we set goals with them. We work in small groups, we have one-on-one, uh, we have meetings with the students to talk about where they need to be, how we're gonna get there. P L Cs, uh, this is common in the schools where they get together and they review, like, and analyze the data. So they're looking at the state scores, they're looking at those absenteeism reports, they're looking at behavior issues, they're looking at social, they're looking at the whole child. Academics is always important, but their basic needs have to be met as well. So they come together in P L Cs, they review all of this data, and they talk about what is most important to these kids to help them grow and improve. Support processes, um, we have lots. Uh, we have been very fortunate, again, with the S R funding, to hire some additional instructional assist, assistance, as well as intervention teachers, and they're working with our kids to try to close those gaps. We have after-school, we have daytime waivers that's provided through our E S S money, we have R T I teachers, um, we also, it's not on there, but our E L staff is phenomenal. Teachers, assistants, working with those kids to help them grow in the English language. And then this is the last key core work process, establish learning culture and environment, which goes right back to that new goal. And again, it's just like what we were saying, it's the whole child. It's reaching out, collaborating with the family resource center, do they need clothes? Do they need school supplies? You know, what kinds of things medically do they need? We have healthy kids clinic, we have social, emotional learning, uh, programs in our schools now, we have mental health specialists. So again, we are trying to support the whole child to make them feel comfortable, so that they want to come to school, they want to learn, and they're trying to plan for their future. So in a nutshell, and I know a couple of our board members, uh, joined us at our public meetings, we went in quite a bit of detail, really talking about all the specifics. But I feel like this is a really good overview of that big packet of information. So if anybody has any questions, I'll be happy to answer them.
And they've had, the board members have had that, uh, the only thing that was changed from the first time I'd emailed that to you all was after our public meeting.
Right.
And we changed that one add-on for the, uh, post-secondary or college career readiness.
Yes.
With the youth service.
Youth service.
And that was a result of that improvement planning meeting.
Right.
Uh, but you're right, they've had that, they've had that to review for a, for a good, a good long time with that.
And then handle with care, I think we should mention that, I just think that's just a need to.
Well, you were, you want to talk about, you were in the session, okay. Well, um, we've, we've recently been to Kentucky School Board Association and, and, uh, I was in one conference and, or one session, and several of you all, Ms. Joey, were in that one session. And, and Ben Wickhox, the state school security marshal, Mr. Jackie Greider knows him well, he was talking about handle with care. And, uh, Ms. Joey had asked me if we do that in the district, and we, and we do. And what that's all about is, um, if a child were, if, if law enforcement were to be involved in, um, in a family's home the night before, um, Mr. Greider, Ms. Dameron, um, and some others get a, a notification. Sometimes it comes through email, especially if state police does it. Otherwise, it may be a text on a little cheat sheet that Mrs. Dameron, um, provided for them. But we don't need to know the details, but it's all, it's just kind of a alert that says, hey, handle John Doe with care. And we know by that take, by that little note, that law enforcement has been in that child's home the night before. So it could have been a domestic violence, it could have been, you know, an adult had a warrant served on them, it could have been a lot of different reasons. But just the fact that, uh, the teachers are alerted, uh, admin, guidance counselor, then we can reach out to that kid. And instead, you know, instead of just sitting back and going, man, you know, Johnny's really upset today, you know, and, and, and he just flies off the handle, just knowing little things like that, then can set a lot better, uh, tone and mood for that, that child, uh, being a boy or girl, whatever. But a lot of these little things that happen behind the scenes that people don't know about until we talk about them. So handle with care, um, it's a great partnership and a great, a great relationship that we have with our, um, law enforcement. Um, and it's a statewide initiative. And we're not, Russell County's not the only one doing that. But we, we appreciate, um, them helping us take care of our kids. Yeah, thank you, Ms. Joey. I'm glad you brought that out. Because we talked about that in the district improvement plan. We really enjoyed, uh, Ms. McFaul led those, but we had a couple of those, and we really enjoyed that, uh, the improvement planning meetings. Appreciate all that Mrs. McFaul does. As you can see, it's quite a lot that she takes care of for us, yes. She does an excellent job.
Yes, and that is a tremendous job.
And one thing Mrs. McFaul, uh, stresses so much is that this comprehensive improvement plan is a live and breathing document. Um, you know, uh, if you all wanted to change something every month, we could, because it's not, it's, it's.
It's set in stone.
It's not set in stone. That's right. Thank you, Mrs. McFaul.
Thank you.
So I recommend that the Russell County Board of Education approve the 2022, 2023 comprehensive district plan as presented.
And I'll make that motion.
And I'll say that.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Ms. Wilson?
Yes.
Ms. Higginbotham?
Yes.
Mr. Kazoo?
Yes.
And Ms. Wicker?
Yes.
And flat 20 for the draft budget.
So on the initial draft budget, you know, we have the draft budget, we'll have a tentative budget in May, and then in September, you'll have your working budget. This budget does not have to be formally approved by the board. It's not submitted to the Kentucky Department of Education. Excuse me. This is just a starting place, uh, for school districts, and the board has to review it prior to January 31st of each year. So it includes, uh, for fiscal year '24 expenditures and revenue of $26,374,944. Uh, Mrs., Ms. Carnes, do you have anything to add with that?
No, I mean, always at this time of year, we need to draft. We just don't know a whole lot about the coming year and partner numbers or anything yet. Um, unless the legislature changes something, it gives us a little relief on the change on that ADA search for attendance that they're going to use. Uh, we potentially may have a pretty good hit next year to our SEEK dollars because our attendance this year, while it's not as bad as, as some districts that I've heard of, um, it's definitely down a significant amount. And even taking into consideration that, uh, the legislature has already approved $100 for the SEEK base, um, it's still looking like it's going to be a pretty good, uh, decrease in our SEEK.
That $100 SEEK, uh, right, that $100 increase for fiscal year '24 would not offset, as it stands right now, our change in ADA.
No, absolutely not. Not even close, not even close. So, you know, attendance is so, so important. Almost all of our funding sources for the general fund, for our grants, that depend, you know, a lot of our grants, like Title, have a funding allocation piece that's related to our attendance. Our food service has a, a big tie to attendance, and so it just can't be stressed enough how important that attendance is for our students. Obviously, we don't want students to come to school if they're not feeling well. But, you know, um, we, we really need them here on all those days when they are feeling, feeling well and, and all that, because it, it plays a big part. And it does not take a big change in that number to make a very large change in that dollar value on that SEEK formula. So, um, that's the biggest, I think, thing that we're going to have to really watch and, and be ready to accommodate for the next fiscal year. I'm not expecting a big increase in, um, the classified employees' retirement contribution. You know, for several years, we were getting pretty big spikes in there, a, a large. They say that it's leveled off, and so I'm looking for it to stay roughly where it is this year. Um, it did not go up. In fact, it decreased just a tiny bit for this year from last year. So, um, I'm hearing that that's kind of stable, and that's just the place it's going to stay at for a while. So that's very good news for us. Uh, but I'm still very concerned about that attendance and what that's going to do, uh, to our number.
Here's something we've always advocated on, so many different things. We're funded, for the most part, on average daily attendance. But when we go buy, um, textbooks, right, Ms. Rita, we buy them as if every kid was in that room. We, people are staffed, uh, when we think about teachers and things. When we buy desks for a classroom, it's as for, all those things are, are purchased on as if we had a full, but then we're funded on the attendance versus the membership.
We see, have there, I'm sure they have incentives.
Oh, yeah.
For attendance. I know, I noticed at, well, at the Ballgame the other day, Platoon County, they had some kids that had perfect attendance, so they were like the honorary coach or something for them. You know, and they brought them out on the floor and, you know.
Th- this has just been another one of those years, um, not only, um, it's COVID, Mrs. Dameron can attest to this, but it's, it's fluid, it's strep, and it's a stomach bug. I mean, significant, significant.
Yeah, and honestly, we're, we're late in the region right now. Like, my DPP friends don't even want to talk to me right now as to maybe what our attendance is, because we're better off than most places are.
Yep.
We're down about two percentage points from where we normally would be this time here. Um, a lot of them are down as much as five. Yeah. Just sickness.
Overall, I know that KDE, of course, has been running the numbers and very mindful of this. They are telling us at our finance meetings that all the scenarios they're running and looking at the attendance, most districts are looking at a 10% to 12% increase in their SEEK. That there's very few that are kind of holding steady, and there's really probably none that have gained students and looking like they're going to gain money. But they're running the average being 10% to 12% change on that. And that's very significant for every district.
And the legislature is, they're being provided that information as well.
They are.
They're, they're aware of that hit that, that districts are playing.
Will they, will they change this?
Well, we hope so. I mean, we, I, I cannot stress what it's meant for the districts that they've held that to the 18, 19 attendance.
Oh, yeah.
Because that would be devastating to districts, including Russell County, uh, if we would have that over these, through these COVID years. Now, prior to attendance being so bad this year, the legislature did not have any appetite to use some of their language, um, to look at that again. But now that it has been so severe, I think they're, they're willing to consider it, so. We, we had met with legislators, um, a couple of weeks ago in Bowling Green. Very good meeting, very good meeting.
We do, we have, what, 92, 94?
Oh, no, we would, we, it's definitely higher than 92 on average. We're looking at 94, 95, aren't we?
Yeah, right now, I think, I ran it Friday, and it was close to 94.
But no, typically, we're, uh, average attend, normal attendance.
Oh, yes, normally this week, we try to make it to Christmas well over 95%, because then that makes up for the end of the year slack out. So we try to finish at about 94.5 to 95%.
And it's what now?
Um, I ran it, it was, it was close to 94. We were doing pretty good until we got, but, but again, that's down from where we need to be at Christmas time, because second semester attendance is always low. And toward the end of the year, it gets a lot lower, yes.
But by the, by the time we are to our, of course, this is just a 30-day session. And they, they, one thing the legislature was very clear about, they did not want, um, they wanted to tweak more things than they wanted to open up new bills and do things, but they met with us last week. But, uh, by the time we do our tentative budget that's due in May, the legislature, it will be over. So we will know, uh, on how that, what that looks like for our budget.
Next.
So that, that doesn't, like I said, that doesn't require any approval or anything this winter, that's just for review.
Speech, language, speech, language pathologist contract.
So this, uh, following speech and language pathologist contract with Karen Dyson is attached to your review, uh, except for, say, for the date changes, there is no, um, change to the previous itinerant services contract. We have some, uh, folks that will be on maternity leave, and Ms. Dyson, which you all know is a retired speech and language pathologist, has, has again, uh, been willing to, uh, to fill in and, and help us out there. So Mr. Hooper's already, already, uh, reviewed, uh, the contract. I recommend approval of the speech and language pathologist contract that's been approved by the board attorney.
So that's just, she's just filling in?
She's filling in, helping, helping out.
I'll make a motion to approve this speech and language pathologist contract. It's been approved by the, by the board atta- attorney.
I'll second it. Okay. Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Ms. Wilson?
Yes.
And Higginbotham?
Yes.
Mr. Kazoo?
Yes.
And Ms. Wicker?
Yes.
It goes to this every time. 2023, 2024 school schedule, calendar discussion.
The Russell County School District Calendar Committee has met to develop a draft 2023, 2024 school year calendar and, um, and schedule. And to quote part of the statute, prior to adopting the school calendar, the local board of education shall hear for discussion the district, the school district calendar committee's recommendations and the recommendation of the superintendent at a meeting of the local boards of education. During a subsequent meeting of the local board of education, the board shall adopt the school calendar for the upcoming school year that establishes the opening and closing dates of the school term, beginning and ending dates of each school term, student attendance days, and days on which schools shall be dismissed. The board may schedule days for breaks in the school calendar that shall not be counted as part of the minimum term. So our district calendar committee, uh, met, and of course, you all already approved the, uh, calendar committee membership. Mr. Murray represented the board of education, um, on that committee. We met on November the 29th and December the 13th. So attached is that draft, uh, 2023, 2024, uh, school year. We had overwhelming, um, of the responses were very positive to this. We talked about it at the, at the committee meetings. One thing that we'll share with me is that people like the predictability of the, um, of the calendar, that it's very, it mirrors this year's calendar, uh, very much so. It has an opening day for teachers on August the 15th with, with the first instructional day for students and teachers on August the 16th. And then the closing day, or last instructional day for teachers or students would be May 23rd, 2024, and the closing day for teachers would be that Friday, uh, May, uh, 2024. And it includes the things that, um, have always been pretty standard for Russell County schools, um, Veterans Day, that holiday, uh, full fall break, uh, Labor Day holiday, of course, is required by law. Martin Luther King, uh, Junior Holiday is required by law. It will be off the week prior to Christmas and the week after for Christmas, and return on January the 3rd. President's Day, and then we have some planning days thrown in there. Good Friday was something that, um, was not part of spring break this year, uh, or this coming year for the 23, 24 calendar, so that's included. And then we would be off that next whole fall, uh, next week after that for, uh, for spring break. So, Mrs. Dameron, do you have anything to add or no concern the calendar?
No, it's very predictable.
We had, uh, 266 total survey responses with, uh, 246 of them saying, yes, I like the calendar as it is, and 20, uh, said no. And, um, they were very, very minimal, um, on, on the changes of that. So we cannot, you all can't approve the first, have to have a one, one reading, if you will, and then at a subsequent, it doesn't have to be the regular board meeting, but at a subsequent meeting of the board of education, then that's when you all approve it. People, um, and I appreciate Ms. Dameron organizing this because we used to do it until, well, after, after Christmas break, when we would start on it. But that's one thing that people had asked us for several years ago, earlier, because people plan holidays or, and plan vacations and things like that. So appreciate Mrs. Dameron having this up for us. Okay.
Out of state and/or overnight trips.
The following group has received approval from the superintendent for the following out-of-state or overnight trip, uh, January 28th, 2023, NGROTC. We'll, we'll go to a rifle meet, which they typically do this every year. Um, and this time it's in New Albany High School in New Albany, Indiana. I recommend approval of the out-of-state or overnight trip.
I make the motion to approve the out-of-state and overnight trip.
I'll second that.
Okay, uh, Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Ms. Wilson?
Yes.
Ms. Higginbotham?
Yes.
Mr. Kazoo?
Yes.
And Ms. Wicker?
Yes.
Safety session.
Executive session for property, KRS 61.810, section 1B. Litigation, KRS 61.810, 1C. And personnel, KRS 61.810, sections 1 and F. KRS 61.810 permits local boards of education to go into executive session. And, um, in this motion, I do, um, request that Mr. Selby join us because he'll be the new board member starting in, uh, January. So we need a motion, and with that motion, if you, if you would make that, to include Mr. Selby to join us in executive session.
I'll make that motion.
Okay. I'll second it. Okay. Uh, Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Ms. Wilson?
Yes.
Ms. Higginbotham? Mr. Kazoo?
Yes.
And Ms. Wicker?
And we move in there.
Wilson? Yeah, we'll stay here.
We'll stay here.
Russell County High School biology teacher in Isabella Crawford of Russell Springs Elementary School, resigning effective January 17th, 2023.
Was she a teacher?
Who, I'm sorry?
The Crawford?
Yes, she was a preschool teacher.
That's a preacher. Freedom choir, they're moving. Public comments?
For, um, public comments, I know, Ms. Wicker, we did do a, a little gift, but we do have a plaque to present to you. After this, we're done.
You sure? I don't need anything else. My thing has been a flop tonight.
Ms. Hammond, did you go? So it reads, Russell County Board of Education presents to Sheila Wicker an appreciation of your commitment and service of excellence in education for all students for eight years as a board member for the Russell County School District.
Sharon, go home?
Yeah, we sent her on.
Okay.
Oh, she drove separate?
Get me take you home?
Did you drive separate?
No. Get me take you home, Michael's going.
I mean, there's.
Or, yeah, because I, I'll, that's a good, I'll, I'm not. Um, but, um, Mr. Selby, Mr. Murray, Ms. Joey, Ms. Brenda, Ms. Hammond? Mr. Kazoo, Ms. Wicker? Ms. Carolyn, I do have you all, um, a small token of our appreciation to you all for, uh, for Christmas. So please get your bag and your, and your card over there before you leave. We appreciate you all, hope everybody, look forward to working with you, Mr. Selby? Yes, sir.
Well, those are not like three hours.
Well, I understand. No, they're not, they're not.
Well, when you have a loan, you have a loan.